So magnification basically means how much the number of times a specimen is enlarged and it's usually represented by using our and yeah and you can learn this triangle easier to memorize and we've also done it so you just cover whichever part you have to find and then just use it so right over here we cover A and then image size over magnification gives you the image size. Now a few things to remember when calculating your magnification or actual image size, you have to make sure that both the units in your answer are the same. So if you're taking image size in millimeters, your actual size should also be in millimeters while calculating magnification. Otherwise the answer would come out Then we have conversions for the units and now we have another first in I D C C we had just millimeters and micrometers. Now we also have nanometers as we're looking at into more detail about cell organelles and those are measured in So one meter is equal to 1000 millimeters and to convert meters from millimeters, you need to multiply it by 1000 and then some millimeter to micrometer just multiply it again and then like one micrometer is equal to 1000 nanometers. And then if you want to go back, you just Then this is a word example, let's just look into it. So the actual thickness of the leaf below is 2000 micrometers. But the image size of the leaf is in the diagram is 15 millimeters. So we know the actual size and the image size. So we have to find the magnification of the diagram. So step one would be to check if the magnification in the magnification the units. So over here they're calculating their image size magnification using a millimeter. So they converted their the actual size to millimeters. So micrometer, one millimeter is equal to 1000 micrometers. So just 2000 divided by two. So we get 2 millimeters and then we already given the thickness. So the thickness of the diagram is from here to here. This will be your 50 millimeters. So just use the magnification formula which is image size over actual size and 50 divided by 2 will give you 25. So the image is basically magnified 25 times. Next we have IP's graphical and stage micrometers. These two concepts are applied in your practical and also in paper one. It's a most repeated question. So IP's graphical is basically a scale of these some divisions on present inside your IP's and then stage micrometer is basically like a slide. It is one millimeter is wrong. And you place it at the place of where you place your specimens slide and then you have to calibrate it before taking any measurements. So the enlarged scale over here is your stage micrometer and then the smaller scale with like a lot of divisions is your IP's graphical. So over here what you have to do is that you take two lines from the stage micrometer. So we're taking this and this. And then you're going to make see which two points on your IP's graphical they correspond to. So here it's corresponding with 10 and 15. So you're going to count the number of divisions in the IP's graphical has. So this shows that it has 40 divisions. Now you're going to just find one graphical division which would be number of micrometers divided by number of graphical division. So we know that number of micrometers is 0.000, 100 micrometers, that is 0.1 millimeter. And then you divide it by 40, you will get 2.5 micrometers. This is yours one small division on your IP's graphical. After this, you're just going to remove your stage micrometer and place your specimens slide and then take your measurements. Then we have resolution and magnification. Magnification, I have told you guys, is the number of times an image is enlarged. And then we have resolution. Resolution is basically the ability to distinguish two points, two separate points on a micrograph in an observing specimen. And the higher the magnification number is, the less resolution you will have. The higher the resolution number is, the less clearer your image will be. So if it's a 10 for resolution, you will 10 nanometers for resolution, the image will be less clear. If it's 2 nanometers, your resolution would be, your image would be very clear. So we will learn the max resolutions for light and electron microscope. So over here you can see there's light microscope and electron microscope and both are observing light. Mitochondria is 1000 nanometers. So through a light microscope, a light microscope will use 400 to 700 nanometer, that's the wavelength. So resolution is basically the half of the wavelength. So you're going to take the minimum in the wavelength for light, which is 400 and then just divided by 2. That's the half. So 200 nanometer is its max resolution. And for electron microscope, we're going to do the same. So you will get 0.5 nanometers. And since mitochondria is observed these quantities and we can use both light and electron microscope to view mitochondria. This is a general parageon between electron and light microscope. So I'll just briefly go through it. So light microscope uses light to as means of viewing the object under the lens. And these light microscope can be used for observing living organisms while electron microscope is used for only viewing dead specimens. So living my, living organisms and their metabolic reactions can be viewed under a light microscope easily. The reason for electron microscope to have to only be able to view dead organisms is because electrons travel inside a vacuum and living organisms won't survive under the microscope. So we can use it to observe for禽 This is a general difference table for electron and light microscope. So electron microscope has covers a large space. It requires large space to keep and then light microscope is small and handy. And then electron microscope uses vacuum. So which means that dead specimens can only be observed and light microscope uses part of vacuum. So we can either view living or dead organisms easily. Sample preparation for electron microscope is complicated as the sample needs to be dehydrated before it can be observed. For light microscope, you just have to cut a very thin piece of whatever sample you need to view and then just put it on a slide, a microscope slide and then just leave it under the microscope. The resolution, the magnification for electron microscope is very high at 5000 and for light microscope is just 2000. So a much more clearer image and you can view much more smaller organelles easily under a light electron microscope as compared to a light microscope. And then max resolution for electron microscope would be 0.5 nanometers and for light microscope is just 200 nanometers. So anything above 200 nanometers can be viewed easily under a light microscope. I have made a list of the general organelles and their sizes that you might need to know. So I'll send it later once session is over. Then calculating the actual size, we'll just go through it. Actual size of a specimen, you read the question first. So a scientist knocks at a sample of red blood cells under a light microscope. The IP's lens of a microscope has a magnification of 10 and an objective lens of 40. We was used to view the blood cells. The scientist takes a photo micrograph of the blood cells in which the avid size of each cell. The reason why I said 200 nanometers, anything above 200 nanometers is because that's the max resolution for the light microscope. So if you view for example, a cell organelle or like a specimen which is lesser than 200 nanometers, you will, you will see a very blurry image or you could inside a light microscope. Higher resolution would make it blurry, but that means that it won't be much clearer. Clearer. So like as you all know that electron microscope like makes gives you a very clearer image as compared to a light microscope. As I already said, that light microscope has 200 nanometer resolution and electron microscope has a very small number which is 0.5. Okay. Now what is the avid size of red blood cells in the sample? You have your answer in micrometers. So we're given the magnification for the IP's and the objective lens and also the image size. So first we'll calculate the total magnification of the specimen, which is just multiply the IP's net magnification and the objective together and you're going to get 400. That's the total magnification. Then you just convert your, since it's asking your answer to be in micrometers, you convert your image size to micrometers as well. So 3 millimeter, 1 millimeter is 1000 micrometers. So you multiply 3 by 1000 and you're going to get 3000 micrometers. Lastly, just input the for, input the values of the formula. So image size over magnification equals actual size. So 3000 micrometers, which are accurate, gives you 7.5 micrometers. This is the avid size of actual size or the avid size of red blood cell. Now we'll look at the eukaryotic cell structures and their functions. First off, we have cell surface. Cell surface membrane is basically a barrier which protects the internal cell environment, the external cell environment. And this all cells will be surrounded by a cell surface membrane and it's partially permeable. So it also has to limit the entry and entrance and exit of substances from and from outside the cell. So it has protein carriers and channels to allow the transport of some molecules. And it's made of a phospholipid bilayer and it's 7 nanometers thick and 10 nanometers in diameter. Then we have the cell wall. Cell wall is not present in animal cells, but it is present in plant cells and also the prokaryotes such as bacteria. And in plant cells, the cell wall consists, is made up of cellulose. So it has cellulose and also it will be providing the generous features with these structures for it for the cell and it's also fully permeable. So it won't restrict any access entrance into the cell and also the exit. And it also has plasma desma or plasma desmarrow which will, which creates a connection with the neighboring plant cells. So we'll learn more about plasma desmarra in chapter seven. Then we have the nucleus. Nucleus is as we all know, the brain of the cell that has so many functions and firstly we'll look into the nucleus. Nucleus will always appear darkly stained when you look under it, it's under the microscope. So it consists of, you know, that it has, it consists, it synthesizes your mRNA and ribosomes and then we have these threadlike structures over inside the nucleus which are, which is called chromatin and these are basically tightly coiled but and when the cell is supposed to divide, they they become loosely coiled like this. So they appear as threads. And then we have nucleic acid or nucleoplasm inside the nucleus and nucleus also has another membrane. Yes. Okay. So nucleoplasm is this part and nucleoplasm basically also in nucleic acid. Then we have chromatin, which is the cell in threadlike structures. And these threadlike structures are basically further make chromosomes when the cell is supposed to divide. Then we have nuclear envelope. Nuclear envelope basically the membrane surrounding the nucleus. And these have small pores like these gaps right here which allow the exit of mRNA and ribosomes from the nucleus to the cytoplasm. And also it all creates an entry pass for the enzymes that are needed like DNA for DNA synthesis, the enzymes are going to enter through these nuclear pores. Then we have the endoplasmic reticulum directly attached to your nucleus, nuclear membrane and these endo- endoplasmic reticulum also has ribosomes. Ribosomes present on their surface and these synthesize the protein during protein synthesis. And this is the description, I went through this. Now we have mitochondria. Mitochondria has three parts, the outer membrane, the inner membrane and the, this is the outer membrane. The inner membrane is these wave like structures. And then matrix is basically the center part. This contains all the the DNA needed for synthesizing ATP and proteins for the mitochondria. The function of outer membrane is that it has large proteins which enable like, enable easy entry of substances into the cell, into the mitochondria and then the, between the inner membrane and the outer membrane is the space where all the ATP synthesis happens or you could say chemiosmosis. I'll write the spelling down. Chemiosmosis. You don't need to learn this term, but it's basically when ADP is converted to ATP. We will learn this in chapter 12, which is the 8th of the syllabus and you don't need to learn this for now. So ATP is, we all know that ATP is used for aerobic respiration. And then we, these folds are called the cristae. So you will need to learn this. Then we have chloroplast. Chloroplasts are used for synthesizing photosynthesis and it contains chlorophyll which is used for performing photosynthesis. So this has a lot of self parts which we are not required to learn. But just to go through about it is that it has two membranes. You just need to learn that there are double membrane. Because that's us in the syllabus, but we don't need to learn what is thylacoid or lamella or brainum. We just don't need to learn these. We just need to learn that chloroplast has DNA, it has starch granules, ribosomes and it has outer membrane and inner membrane which means that it will it will have a double membrane. I think it's pretty bad. Double membrane. Yeah. And yeah, that's all for chloroplast. And one thing I would like to point out would be that chloroplast and your mitochondria. So that would mean that mitochondria would appear in your electron life as compared to chloroplast. That would be an easier way for you to distinguish between the two. Then we have ribosome. Ribosome consists of two parts, the large subunit and the small subunit and in between the mRNA lies on the small subunit and then tRNA comes into the ribosome on the large subunit part and synthesizer, photosynthesizers of protein. This process we will learn in chapter six. So we'll go into more detail than only. Then you only need to know that ATS ribosomes are present in eukaryotes. Any eukaryote would have ATS ribosomes and then 7DS would be inside your prokaryotes. And this is just the site of translation or in general protein synthesis. Next we have endoplasmic reticulum. Over here both are shown joined together, but usually that's not the case. This smooth endoplasmic reticulum is more towards the cell membrane as it just needs to synthesize lipids, hormones and steroids. So it's present near the cell surface because all these things need to be carried out outside the cell. Then we have rough endoplasmic reticulum, which is directly connected to the nucleus. Yeah, directly connected to the nucleus and it is studied with ribosomes which synthesize protein as we already discussed. Uh yeah. And then we have Golgi apparatus or Golgi complex or even Golgi body. All these three names are acceptable when you're writing your answers. So you can write any that works. Now the function of Golgi apparatus or Golgi body is just that they are flattened sacks of membrane which are similar to the smooth endoplasmic reticulum, but a difference that you can the way to differentiate between is that it has like, it's basically shaped like a wifi signal or you could say even a Spotify logo. If you look at it closely. And there is like two sides to the Golgi apparatus. So the cyst space is where the vesicle from the rough endoplasmic reticulum or the smooth endoplasmic reticulum enters the Golgi apparatus and then it modifies and packages the protein into a secretary vesicle right here. And the secretary vesicle comes out from the transface. So you don't, we just need to know that it synthesizes sorry, yeah, it modifies and packages proteins. That's the main functions. So it can create vesicles and also it also creates lysosomes. We'll discuss lysosomes right now, later in the chapter. We have large permanent vacuum now. Large permanent vacuum is only present in plant cells, not usually in animal cells. Vacuum also has its own membrane which is called tonoplas and it contains cell sass which has assimilates and other nutrients. Then it also has a central vacuum which or which contains its own functions. Yeah. In animal cells, the vacuums are not permanent. So they might form and they're just, it's usage shape. Then we have vesicles. Vesicles have a membrane and then it contains whatever the molecule needs to be transported or needs to be stored. Okay. So here is lysosome. Lysosome is required to learn. It contains hydrolytic enzymes which break down the cell structure. Any cell which is born out or is not needed would be broken down using lysosome. And lysosomes basically also any foreign pathogens occur would also be broken down using this. Next we have sentrioles. These are present inside the cytoplasm and are in right angles to each other. These replicate when the cell undergoes myotosis. So these will replicate and then for move towards opposite holes of the cell. The main thing that makes it up is my, my, my dual triplets. And later on, these will also form these spindle fibers which will help to separate this chromosome right here. Now let's look into microtubules. Microtubules are made up of alpha and beta tubulin and are really small, 25 nanometers in diameter. And these form the, these are joined together to form dimes. And then the dimes are joined into filaments and 13 protofilaments form a cylinder which is finally called a microtubule. The cytoskeleton, it is using the cytoskeleton in organizing your cell organelles mainly and also in the Then we have microvilli. These are finger like for projections coming out of this cell which provide a larger surface area for absorption of nutrients. Usually they are present in the intestine. Then we have cilia. Cilia is, has hair like projections. These are hair like projections which are made up of microtubules. And these are present inside your trachea to prevent entry of foreign substances inside your respiratory passage. And it also allows other movement, movement of substances over the cell surface. So this, it does not We have flagella. Flagella is also made up of microtubules but are longer. And these are usually present on prokaryotes and also an example inside the humans would be sperm cells and it provides cell movement. Then this is a basic electron micrograph. It shows the general features of an animal cell which would be rough endoplasmic reticulum, Golgi apparatus. And then a nucleus. I have saved two pictures where it means electron micrographs, one for animal cell and one for plant cell will label them together later on. This is electron micrograph for plant cell. This has mitochondria, large pieces over here are called chloroplasts, then a large vacuum and also cell wall, a nucleus and you can also see a nucleolus inside. And also you can see that it's more regularly shaped as compared to an animal cell. Now we'll look into their structures deeply. Now before we do, I'll just tell you a general difference between the two. So plant cells have, do not have sentrioles and microvilli as well, as well as animal cells will have these. But plant cells have a large vacuum and chloroplast which animal cells do not contain. So microvilli is present on an animal cell. These are on just specialized cells. So like inside the intestine, the cells would have microvilli maybe. And then Golgi vesicle is basically any vesicle produced by the Golgi body. Golgi body is present closer to the rough endoplasmic reticulum right here. Where is the rough endoplasmic reticulum. We have these what do you call stick like structures which are microtubules which will help in cell organization and movement of cell organelles. Then rough endoplasmic reticulum is also studied with ribosomes and ribosomes are also present inside the cytoplasm. That and then cell surface membrane is surrounding the whole cell. There is cytoplasm. And then smooth endoplasmic reticulum, as I said, is closer to the cell surface membrane. Then nucleus contains your nucleolus which is this darkly stained big part. And then threadlike structures right here. It, I'll color it with another. These threadlike structures are your chromatin and then nuclear pores are present inside with the nuclear membrane. So nucleus is also double membrane this one. Then we have mitochondria over here. Then lysosomes are also present inside this and these more efficient in a bit are same. These will be used in cell division. We have the plant cell right here. Now the plant cell has general, I'm going to tell you the general structures first which are nucleus is present the same way as it's present inside the animal cell. And then we have Golgi body and Golgi vesicle same as the animal cell. Then mitochondria is also inside the animal cell and the plant cell. Ribosomes, microtubules present. Rough ER and smooth ER is also present inside. Then we have this big vacuum which is different for the plant cell. And this contain, this is surrounded by tonoplas and then the cell sass. We also have chloroplast right here and then this is the plasma desma, the gaps between the cell wall. This creates a connection between the neighboring cells. This you will learn in detail later. Then the vital role of ATP, this is a bit out of the syllabus, but we just need to know that ATP is used for aerobic respiration inside for the cell. So the mitochondria will produce ATP for aerobic respiration and aerobic respiration inside muscles or to carry out nerve impulses and even to change the shape of cell membrane after transport. Then these are structures. Now we look at So these are structural features which are found in prokaryotes. Now prokaryotes, as I told you guys, that it is made up of 70S ribosomes. So ribosomes are always present inside the prokaryotes, there is circular DNA and then cytoplasm, cell surface membrane and cell wall. Cell wall is made up of And then cytoplasm, cell surface membrane and cell wall, cell wall is made up of a t-dog glycan. And so there is no nucleus present and the DNA is just lying inside the cytoplasm. Now in photosynthetic prokaryotes, you will find this um in folding of the membrane which helps in the photosynthesis. Then plasmids are small circle of DNA, these are used in genetic engineering more. Then we also have a capsule which further protects the cell. The prokaryotes and then flagellum is just used for motion, this is sometimes present inside the cell, not necessary. Then we have phylle, which attaches to other cells and also using such reproduction. Next, this is a general differentiation or comparison table for your prokaryotes and eukaryotes. So size, we'll just compare the size first, sizes. Prokaryotes, this size is very small, so like zero point five to five micrometers in diameter, so there is very, they are very small. And eukaryotes are up to a hundred micrometers in diameter, so pretty big. Then their genes are just lying for prokaryotes, genes are just lying inside a DNA circular circular DNA. And no proteins are present and just inside lying inside the cytoplasm. For eukaryotes, the DNA is associated to the histone proteins uh over which it's tightly coiled up. And they form chromosomes giving. Then the cell divides, prokaryote divides using binary species which is replicated. And for eukaryotes, a cell will divide using mitosis or meiosis. Mitosis, cell replication and then meiosis is applied cell. From one organism to another organism from the other organism and. Or in the process of meiosis to form a diploid cell. Then the ribosomes present inside prokaryotes are seventy S ribosomes, eukaryotes are eighty S ribosomes. There are very few organelles and they're non-membranous inside prokaryotes and for eukaryotes, there are a lot of organelles. With different functions for each, so single membrane. Organelles, double membrane organelles and no membrane organelles are present. So you need to learn where which ones are single membrane and then double membrane that is. No membrane present. So double membrane would be nucleus, mitochondria and. And then lysosomes, call jai complex, or call jai body and vacuoles with the single membrane. Ribosome centers the microtubules total. Cell wall is present in prokaryotes. And for in prokaryotes, it is made up of usually of a t-dog glycan or a mutant. And for eukaryotes, cell wall is only present inside. On this in plant cells and not on animal cells and in that's made up of cellulose and procylo cells. It would be, it would also have. Then fungi also has um a cell wall which is made up of chicken. We have key features of viruses. This is I think the last part, so viruses are. Non-cellular infectious particles and they basically live on both cells. Beyond most and then it has a nucleic acid, this will have nucleic acid. Nucleic acid is present. And inside there, there is a single standard DNA or net and there is a poking. Which um protects the virus. Then it basically has parasitic qualities, so it is like which invade the living cell and then um. Disrupted um protein synthesis, struck and then make protein synthesis and then disrupt the protein synthesis. And produce new viral body. It also has these protein molecules present to which will bind to the antigens. Or receptors present on your living cell. And that's chapter one. All you need to know about chapter one. Now we're going to look at the electronic micrographs for access. We first look at. This is. Of the answer in electronic. So if you guys want to just take a look at it. I'll ask you guys to just like tell me what you guys think of which of the structure. You guys can try. Just tell me what's what's this, just name it inside. That's uh since this is a plant cell and it's like really large, that would be a chloroplast. As you can see, we have like multiple structures, you can see a bit of other structures inside it as well and it's larger. So it must be a chloroplast. Then what about this? Anyone wants to try the next one? Yes, that's a cell membrane. Cell membrane. Okay. Now, what about this is the E. As the nucleus, it's like basically pointing towards. Um yes. No worries. Now try this one, this arrow right here. Yeah, that's the mitochondria. It basically has these um crystal can be seen easily on a mitochondria, so I don't know why it's not being shown here but. Um usually it is, so it's easier to identify the mitochondria that way. Mitochondria. Then this arrow, I think. Yeah, cell vacuole. Vacuole, which is what else? So this one is not clear here. But it's closer to the nucleus and there is. R D R present right here, so this is the call jai. It's a bit further, so I would say it's a call jai. Okay, so this one is done. We'll do the other one now. Um how about this? Okay, this is labeled already. Well, it was blurry, but it was further away from the nucleus, so that's why I said that's. Yeah, me too. Okay, so number one. Yeah, this is an animal cell. So what about number one first? Yes, cell membrane. Number two. I don't think number two can be seen easily. Yeah, number two can't be seen in this. This is. I don't know this, but it's not a call jai either. Okay, skip to number three. I think that's. Yeah, seems to be a centriole. Centriole. What about number? Yes, that's the mitochondria. What about number? It could be a. Not a ribosome, ribosomes are really, so it can't be a ribosome. And then number six. How do I know that's a call jai, call jai is. Uh would be present uh closer to the rough endoplasmic reticulum, as you can see this part. This part is the rough endoplasmic reticulum and they're they're pointing towards here, which would mean that there could be a call jai. This is the nucleus. Seven and eight, seven and eight, seven. Seven looks like a rough endoplasmic, it's pointing towards the rough endoplasmic reticulum. And then eight might be just a ribosome. I think it is pretty unclear, but seven is clearly. Yeah, ribosome or lysosome. Yes, and it's not even clear, it just looks very crazy. This is a clearer image. We can try that. Okay, so. Eight, or should we go with eight? Yeah, sure. Or you could say just the cytoplasm, because it's not pointing to any organelle, not really. Yeah. Sign. I have chemistry and I can answer that's what. Okay, what about? Not the mitochondria, that's a vacuum, because it has literally nothing inside, it looks empty, so that should be a vacuum. Because this is a plant cell, so plant cells have, no, there can be um. Small vacuoles as well, but generally plants would have a larger. What about C? C is something. So C is more a matter. Ribosomes are pretty tiny, yeah, it can't be a ribosome. It's a stage green. Because remember, it has stage greens as well. Yeah. And. Not blue or stretch. Yeah. So what about D? Yes, it is. Chloroplast. Okay, E now. Usually they're they are this much clear only, you might see the uh the crystal on it and sometimes as well. My little brother calls it croset, I don't know why it looks very croset. But I usually find those type of structure and just name them mitochondria which is. What about F? Yes. G. Yes, that's the nucleus. It can't be a nucleolus because that's like a big circle, darkly stained big circle inside the nucleus. But these are kind of like, they're like structures, I would say, it's just pointing towards. Between nucleus and nucleolus. Um uh are you talking about the functions or like in the appearance? Okay, so the nucleolus basically makes up the ribosomes and um the nucleus contains the chromatin which makes up the chromosome. For appearance, whenever you're going to be given like a micrograph, it appears darkly stained, so when you stain a cell. The nucleus will be lightly stained and then the nucleolus would appear like a big circle and would be darkly stained and inside the nucleus. Yes, a big like a circular thingy inside the nucleus, that's the nucleus. What about H? Yep, nuclear envelope. Nuclear envelope or nuclear membrane, both works. What about I? This is what's seen at. Nuclear envelope is basically the membranes surrounding the. So it's pointing uh uh at the outside of the nucleus, so that should be the nucleus. What about I? Not the flagellum, it's basically pointing somewhere towards the nuclear membrane. Not the flagellum, it's basically pointing somewhere towards the nuclear membrane. Yes, uh yeah, so it's pointing towards the nuclear membrane. Which means it should be um rough endoplasmic reticulum because we all know that it's. Connected, in most cases connected with the nucleus. It's okay. That's A R. Okay, what about J? Yes, that's a cell membrane. Usually this is the only part, the labeling of the cells and like finding out, figuring out. What cell organelis were is the most difficult part of this chapter. Functions and everything you can revise easily and those are further explained in detail later on in the syllabus. That clears up more of your concepts. So I hope that this labeling thing actually worked out for you guys. In the exam, it comes in P two and even P one. It can come in P one as well. Theory and M's keeps them. So I hope this made sense, the labeling, because this is the most difficult part. And if you guys have any other questions related to the chapter, you can ask now. Yeah, sure. So I guess that's all for chapter one. Thank you guys for joining. Hopefully, inshallah, I'll be doing other chapters as well. Yeah, biological molecules is the next. Thank you guys for joining. Hopefully, if within a few days, I'll do the second chapter as well, no problem.